Meeting of the Summer Grove Planning Board for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two will please come to order. Notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. A copy of notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on Golden Board outside Borough Hall. Two mail fax were emailed to the messenger to get messenger does that current news, and three given to the corporate administrator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, deliberate, and justice for all.
Yeah, okay, roll call, please.
Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Ms. Rolinski advised she would be absent. Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Brady?
Here.
Ms. Adair?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins? Mr. Kraska?
Here.
Mr. Karskis?
Here.
Mr. Cleveland?
Here.
Mr. Addicks is absent. Ms. Warner?
Here.
Okay, thanks. All right, we have minutes, November ninth, twenty twenty-two, for the regular meeting, and then for the executive session.
So, um, I had emails. Did you make the directions? The directions are in front of me. Okay, thank you.
Um, can we do this both at once?
Uh, if everybody was present for vote, yes.
Okay. I wasn't present for either.
Okay, that's fine, we can vote. Um, is there no longer a reason to have the minutes kept confidential at this point? So maybe you vote on them, they're covered.
We took no action. We...
I haven't seen them, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, we took it. The minutes are pretty sparse.
Okay.
And that's fine, but we, the board took no action.
Okay, I just, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Okay, um, roll call, please.
Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Karedi?
Karskis, yeah, I abstained.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
And Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have two ARB, um, applications, both of which were approved by the Architectural Review Board. So move to a third second. Okay, let's do a roll call now, too.
And who was the second?
I don't know.
Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Karskis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, um, next up, we have a preliminary investigation for determination of an area in need of redevelopment, um, which is essentially attaching some property to the West Main Street redevelopment area. You want to?
Well, Chairman and I will make it quick. We got some resolutions from the council to look at these areas. I'm gonna go off the map, because I think the map is pretty self-explanatory. The red are the parcels that were studied, will really meet the criteria to be added when we're, when we're in need of investigation, plenty of area. So, the, the red parcel, the Wells Fargo property that stands back, the municipal parking that we're in right now, police parking area, which is part of the same lot, the two family, which is right next to it, and then the rest of it's the post office, and what it used, I used to call it Ruthie Bowers thirteen space parking lot, I think Anthony DiSappio did now. Those are the parcels we looked at. So there's only really five parcels. So you go through the criteria, and they're basically the, the layout of Wells Fargo. It's not the front, it's the back, it's the drive-throughs, it's not being used, it's the easement that you look, there's a crazy easement we have, lack of parking and circulation, and this building's the same thing. This is an old brewery, uh, it was in the fifties and sixties, the borough bought it in nineteen seventy-six and made it council chambers, so it's kind of outdated. So you see the criteria, yeah, and the parking lot, the two family, and the, the, uh, post office in there for good planning, for principle. I'm not gonna say the post office is rundown, dilapidated, not, you could make an argument about parking, but other than that, it's, it's actually H, it's a designation of delineated that consists of smart growth plan, principle adopted pursuant to law and regulation. Okay, so that's the red parcels. The green ones are already in the eastern central business district, or in the redevelopment area. They were declared parcels in need of redevelopment in the late nineties. I have a, a, it's, it's addendum to this report that says the criteria remain the same, they should be redeveloped. Only thing that this is recommending is switching them to the West Main Street, so we get continuous blocks that can have the same redevelopment area. If you look in the map, you have two obvious areas that hopefully have critical mass that can do redevelopment. That's when we're opposed. Obviously, nothing's gonna happen with the post office until they vacate, the post office leaves. Uh, we had talked about ten years ago about making that a performing arts building for extending Division Street down. It's in the ordinance that sometimes, so this would help that along, should the, the post office leave. Other than that, uh, obviously, as Colin has said more than once, that this building's gonna be hopefully not used by council within a year. Right, Colin, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Yeah.
The paint down for sale sign is dry.
Right, and then we have the issue that the police are gonna go to the emergency service building, so we're trying to line all this up, and so this study will allow, should the council, the plans would agree with this, allow redevelopment plans to be, uh, generated for these areas, these two areas. So, in a nutshell, that's what you have. We can go through all this, I think you've got wonderful background, but it's a little dry, and I don't know if anybody wants to be bored with all this information.
I get it, Larry.
Yes.
Very excited, very excited.
So that's like the third iteration. I actually cut it down based on comments made by the chairman and Colin, and I think Dr. Brand actually had some comments in there, too, that I cut down, and that's why you have the executive summary up front, but there's a lot of information there in case for challenge that we're good.
So we're basically including, adding some new properties, and then we're just shifting the west side of, of Bridge Street, so that it's contiguous to this zone.
Correct.
Rather than create a barrier between east and west.
So, all the parcels, basically, as shown, either green or red can be under one redevelopment plan. And we're only adding, well, when I say only, it's just the Wells Fargo, the borough property, the two family right next to it, the post office, and the thirteen space parking lot on the corner. That's, you're not adding a lot, it's not, in my opinion, not a heavy lift, but, uh, I, I think Dr. Brand, I think you know that you're ready to get this thing rolling, right?
Yeah, I, I think that the whole, actually, the whole focus of this was to still be on its environment as part of redevelopment area, because we won't be vacating it, and quite honestly, I don't think we have a use for it after we vacate it. It will probably be a much more attractive parcel for someone who wishes to redevelop it, and that is the idea of redevelopment area, isn't it? And it'll let, it'll let the development community know what we want to see here, so we're not faced with serious barriers.
We'll still, once, once the area is designated, we still need to get together and, and modify the plan to include those pieces of property.
Yeah, well, I think that's gonna be part of redevelopment committees, it's not, one thing we have to make that, uh, quickly, as far as, that's why I pushed to get this done by the end of this year, so we can now put on the front row. We'll be out of here pretty soon. And I don't want to maintain it.
With any luck.
And I don't wanna maintain it, guys.
Okay, so procedurally, we don't need to read anything into the record because we have the report, correct?
Uh, we have the report. I did draft a resolution that we need a motion in a second, so we could adopt taking that action. The only thing I will need to do, and I'll amend it on the record, and I'll do it after the fact that I'm voting, is to incorporate into this resolution the transfer of what Mike called the, uh, parcels in red, uh, sorry, in green, that are currently, uh, block one nineteen, lots eleven, eleven oh one, twelve, and thirteen, and block one twenty, lots two, three, four, five, six, and seven, uh, that were already deemed areas in need of redevelopment, and we transfer them from the eastern central business district redevelopment area to the West Main Street redevelopment.
Okay.
Need a motion in a second. Good resolution.
Second. Okay, we need a roll call on this one.
That would then have to go to the Borough Council for a reason.
Yeah. There's a recommendation.
We gotta make the recommendation.
Right, resolve the recommendation.
Mike, I have just a question for you. Has the case brought up? Talking about date or time, or is this just an issue?
We're just planning for the future. I don't know any date and time, but we've been...
We're gonna take it.
It's assuming that sometime in the future they're gonna leave because of this spacing constraints, that's the idea. And we have thought the Division Street was done, we had thought about that being performing arts, a perfect building for it. So this will just give more tools to the municipality to try to make that happen. I said no, the answer is no.
Now, I got to answer that question. Many years ago, maybe ten, twelve years ago, there was a, a thought that that may be, that would be, so, so Dr. Posma asked, he's wondering about that. I, nothing's come across my nerves, maybe he doesn't, but no. But for now, it's staying until, and it could change tomorrow. Right, and they also could decide to stay in town?
Right. If they have a...
If I'm ready, Chairman.
But, but...
Right. I just make comment, because this is kind of...
Sure.
I had, I also need to open it up to the public for a...
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that now. I'll open it up to the public.
All right, okay. Can I now talk?
Yes.
When I presented this whole concept...
James Patterson.
Colin, drive, the Director of Economic Development, twenty-five, whatever it is, West Main Street, some of it.
Western, yeah.
Whatever. When we presented this to the council back in two thousand, to have the resolution to do the study and bring it to the planning board, we made a commitment that the post office would be noted to be rehabilitated, not redeveloped. So that should allay any fears here, that, you know, we will write into the amended plan that that building should be rehabilitated, and it would take a very good argument, um, to get the borough changes.
I think the discussions about the bank followed similar lines about the building. Okay, any other comments, questions from the public? We'll close the public session, and we have a motion in a second, so we need a roll call.
Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Karskis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay, next we have Resolutions one, two, eleven oh seven, three, twenty-nine. Frank?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Frank Regan, I'm Special Redevelopment Counsel for the Borough, have been since two thousand and three, also a licensed professional planner. The, similar to the study that, that Mike presented to you, this is a much simpler, proposal, but it's essentially the same process that we need to go through in presenting this to the board. This is with respect to lot two point oh one, in block fifty, eighty-two Fairview Avenue. Back in two thousand and six, the council designated the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area, and subsequently adopted the redevelopment plan. Block two, you have the tax map you have in front of you, is a three, six, two-acre, parcel, is currently located in the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area. Lot two point oh one is not, and that's what we here this, this evening, to present to you. The redevelopment plan's been amended numerous times, as you're all aware, there's been some redevelopment as a result of, of those amendments, the Parkview project, TFP project, which hopefully will go the other way shortly. There's a new project that's being proposed by DGM Properties, uh, which is Storms Family for the Truck Forum site, which is lot two, and also two point oh one. They're the contract purchaser for both of those properties. What I also presented to you with the exhibits, and we should probably mark that as exhibit one, uh, which is a tax map, and then a portion of the concept plan that has been presented to the Borough, uh, by DGM Properties.
Frank, you wanna mark this collectively as one?
Yeah, that's fine. The Borough Council designated DGM Properties as a conditional re developer back in October, oh, sorry, February, uh, early this year, and extended that designation in October. And then on November seventh, the council adopted the resolution that's on your agenda this evening, to examine whether two point oh one should become part of the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area. It directed, the resolution directed me to work with the planning boards professionals with respect to the required preliminary investigation, rather than go, do a full-blown report, as Mike did, um, which is the typical way to do it, um, when you're dealing with multiple properties, but we're dealing with a, a single property here, and, you know, in my opinion, that particular property doesn't meet any of the criteria set forth in section five of the redevelopment law, but there is a provision in the redevelopment law that Mike actually also relied upon for the study that he did for the South Bridge Street properties, which is section three, uh, that allows a property that may not meet any of the applicable criteria to be included in redevelopment area to facilitate the redevelopment, and that's what's being proposed here. Uh, just quickly, the property, lot two point oh one, uh, is about, just under twelve thousand square feet, and as you can see, it's, you know, sticks in the, in the middle of, surrounded on three sides by lot two. Not sure when the lot was created, uh, but it contains a two-story, one-family home. The properties obviously have a small lot, as I indicated, it doesn't meet the criteria. I just wanna quickly go over section three of the redevelopment law, which is what I believe the board can rely upon to recommend to the council that this property be included in the redevelopment area. And it states that redevelopment area may include lands, buildings, or improvements which of themselves are, are not that tremendous to the public's health, safety, and welfare, but the inclusion of which is found necessary with or without change in their condition to the effective redevelopment of the area which they are part. So that's essentially what I believe the board can rely upon. You can also rely upon criteria H, which is the smart growth, uh, criteria, uh, but that in and of itself, I don't think would ever pass legal muster, no one's actually relied upon that solely for purposes of including or designating redevelopment area. So that's really the extent, as I said, if you, the one thing I wanted to just point out, I divided you with an excerpt of the concept plan, and if you look, um, you know, at the top, sort of in the middle of the page, you can see the, the outline of lot two point oh one, uh, as it lies within the proposed concept plan, and you can see that the project that's proposed wouldn't be able to be constructed without the inclusion of this property. So, without, there's no reason for me to say anything further, other than I think that the board can rely upon this section three, to include, I'm gonna point on one of the redevelopment area.
And you're confident that we don't need a written report in this case?
Correct. Yeah, I, the important thing is to, to provide the, to hold a public hearing, which was properly noticed, and that's what we're doing this evening. Because we're relying on section three, um, there's no reason to do a full-blown report, uh, because as I said, I don't believe the property meets any of the criteria, but the inclusion in the redevelopment area is necessary to facilitate the, the redevelopment of, of the larger redevelopment area.
Okay.
And that's a sufficient, sufficient legal basis on which the board's gonna rely.
Yes. Do they own two point oh one?
They're the contract purchaser for both, two and two point oh one.
That's common.
Correct, correct.
When this is over, will they merge?
Yes, I, I assume, I mean, I assume as part of the site plan, they would merge those two lots, uh, and, and, you know, create one master lot on which they would propose to develop.
Frank, uh, question, have we received any objection to any of this, uh, generally speaking, uh, all parties in the agreement?
Yeah, I mean, one of, one of my concerns, and, and one of the reasons we waited to, to present this to the board was to ensure that, uh, that the conditional developer had the property under contract, just to ensure that, you know, there weren't doing something without the support of the property owner, obviously, the property owner's selling his property.
It's not condemnation or something.
Yeah, and it's, and a, a fair point, it, it is obviously a non-condemnationed redevelopment area, so there's no action like that anticipated.
Frank, a question, with, with the inclusion of this lot, it is a bigger lot, where, where it used to live anyway, we still have three lots to the left that have single-family homes on an, an industrial use. If there was future interest in redeveloping that, we would have to go through the same process, then?
Correct, definitely.
But for now, there's no need to do anything with those lots, because they're, they're not holding anything back.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Now, I'll open it up to the public for questions and or comments. Hearing done, we will close the public session, and I guess you just need a simple motion to...
It's the same, I, I, I believe that Kara's also prepared a resolution.
I have, I have, Mr. Chairman, and I did outline the section three definitions that Frank referred to as the reason as well, as Frank earlier, eight, that's in part of the testimony, the reliance is one in section three. Frank also made a good point, um, that I did not reference last time with the other redevelopment thing. There was proper notice, uh, given regarding this meeting, that this board has served station to hold this public character in both of the redevelopment areas.
Okay.
I need a motion in a second, and I have a resolution, right? So, is that there? Who's the second?
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Karskis?
Yep.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, uh, for items not on the agenda, I received a request...
One more, really quick, the Hanji Resolution is also, it's not on the agenda, but, uh, it's ready for the one we got next time.
Okay, I haven't...
On the station.
I haven't seen that resolution. Do you have enough to circulate, so we can have a look at it?
No, it's out, copy, it was emailed this afternoon, so it is in the email, it's just not printed out.
Okay.
Um, it was circulated to the applicant, um, and, uh, it might have changed to you also, um, and also to the applicant's, uh, professional, so if I commentary that, of course, again, um, it's up to board.
Everybody's happy with it?
I have, I have pulled up, I did, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I was, I was in class all day, so I need to...
Lucky you.
A look at it, yeah. Okay. So, would you state the official name of the applicant?
What? Uh, so it's the application of Hanji Station LLC and four S F F, four S F W LLC, for amended preliminary and final site plan and variance approval and amendments to the resolution conditions. And if you'd like, I think probably the most important thing here are the conditions that are in place, and, and nothing. Hold on, I'm in.
That's a transition, isn't it? Yeah, the condition for... The property contains a transition. The prior, the last permission is still in effect. Uh, that the applicant...
Parking variance.
The applicant is gonna park, I think it's fifteen, or you can decide on Jason throughout fifteen, they're gonna park off-site, including the tenant. And, uh, they're gonna come back for a minute's site plan, and if they exceed, they're allowed to put the outdoor dining for the three restaurants, and then they exceed the parking variance, they come back for approval from the board. I think, I think that's all of them.
Yeah, I, here, hold on.
Jason, do you have them pulled up, do they cover them all, or did I miss?
I'm reading through them all, basically.
See, they're in the end, they're in the end.
They're in the variant?
I have, you're right here. The developer, the property owners represented to the board, and also to the plans above, the approved uses of the property shall be three restaurants, one residential unit, and the use of the basement for storage only. Uh, the applicant will apply to the Borough for any permits required in connection with the use and development of the property as proposed, which installation will comply with all applicable building construction codes. Um, all issues and requirements outlined in the call report will be addressed, with the exception of the restriction on deliveries, which will be amended as noted, uh, further below condition. Any additional changes to the building shall be approved by Borough Council and the ARB, which we know is still an ongoing condition, and we just wanted to specifically note that here. Uh, written proof of agreements, permits, or other arrangements for the thirteen off-site parking spaces shall be provided for the board by, provided to the board for approval by the board professionals. As Mike said, if the applicant and/or the tenant seek to increase the number of tables and/or square footage, because if, remember, parking requirements, we looked at it both ways, both by square footage and also by number of, uh, seats. Or take other action to increase the minimum number of parking spaces required by the code for the use of the property, the applicant shall apply to the board for an amended site plan variance and/or resolution approval if necessary. The employees of the restaurants and the occupant of the residential unit will utilize the off-site parking spaces. Delivery shall be restricted to after seven before nine. Sound studies shall be completed, submitted to the board engineer slash planner, to ensure that all sounds fall within the noise parameters permitted, again, that's an ongoing condition. The catch-all, all conditions imposed by prior approval shall remain a full course of effective unless this modified, and shall be satisfied prior to issuance of CO for the three restaurants in one residential unit, uh, and then our standard application to the rest of these everything paid and followed bound by all the exhibits.
Okay, thank you. So moved. Second.
Who was the second, I thought?
I don't know, everybody.
Um, Chairman Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Karskis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll get to the item that I had, we received a request, um, from the, from A and A Summer Grove LLC, which is the development of the park, or Fairview Avenue, and, not a park, playground, and they're requesting that, because they, they've had a number of issues getting our professionals to agree to what they presented to us, and the Borough Council has approved that, they're requesting that they be permitted to, um, to post a bond, and, and we waive that condition.
What, what does that mean?
That they, they work it out with our professionals, but since the Borough Council, subject to the redevelopers agreement, has already approved it, then the only thing standing in the way is our resolution.
So the specific language, the specific language of the condition states that... The development of the park area shall be subject to the review and approval of the Borough Council, warrants incorporated to the, the developer's slash redevelopers agreement, closed warrants, and the Borough Park Commission.
Okay, so...
Is the park gonna be built, or not?
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Eventually, that's the bond.
Yes, they, they want...
To not get out money, that's what...
No, they, they want, it's, it's, it's a different plan than originally looked at, they changed the plan.
And, and they want to subsidize the property and get the permanent financing, and, 'cause they're gonna donate that property to the Borough.
Yeah, right, right now, they have a TCO, so what the chairman is saying is they'll put a bond out for the park, and not make that a condition, so they can get a CO for the buildings. Therefore, the bond will be there, so Larry, if the park isn't built, I guess the planning board, the council, could act on the bond in the future.
And the bond is sufficient to pay for the same side?
What reason, what reason would we have for changing that, then? It's a condition.
That was part of the reason why we said...
The condition was approval of Borough Council paying... The condition was approval of Borough Council and Mike.
And the recreation. And they didn't get that. They got council only.
They only got council approval. But they're willing to post a bond in order to get that condition waived. Rather than.
Why would that come to us?
It's our condition.
I understand that the planning board, it sounds like the planning board wasn't even involved in this.
Planning board was involved in it by way of approval of the plan, the overall plan.
Oh, okay.
And so the Borough Council has signed off on it. I don't know whether Mike has or not, and I don't know.
The language doesn't technically say that it says the park.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It sounds like they were excluded from the TCO.
So I, personally, I think we should allow this. I think we're, you know, the project has seen difficulty with building the torn down, and they've had a tough row in order to get to where they are. And I don't think we should stand in their way.
So they, they are confused.
Is the park going to go to the specification that was originally agreed upon?
No.
No.
No, what happened is it was a, there was a concept of a park that no one knows what exactly it was on the approved plans. It was a concept. And the resolution kicked the actual details to the borough for the park, the actual how it's going to lay out. Okay, so if you look at the approved plans, you'll see a park for the pocket park there. But we, you'd see stuff, but no one knows what that stuff is. It was just a concept. So they came up with an actual proposal and went back and forth for, I guess, two years, Colin, about that, two years?
Yeah, it morphed into something far greater than what they anticipated.
Right.
What they've come back and what they presented to the council. In format or form conforms to what the site plan had on it, but with a lot more detail. They've now shown the equipment and everything else. And it conforms to all the New Jersey State Safety Regulations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason they've requested it being split off is, one, they lost two years in dickering with the recreation.
That was not easy there. That was not, they spent two years, that was not on recreation or anybody else but them. They provided a plan we agreed to, and then they went back and decided they didn't like it.
That's not entirely correct, and we don't need to get into that tonight, Chris.
The thing is, this is what.
I have another question, though. Do you think that the bond that they're proposing is sufficient to build even something close to what the original plan was, or is it a concept of?
The bond number, the bond number is going to have to be worked out.
Yeah, it hasn't been established.
It hasn't been established?
Well, why don't we establish that before we give them whatever they want? Because what I can see happening is that we'll say, yeah, whatever, you know, we'll let you do it. And then somebody else somewhere will say, never mind about the park. We built, that's what I'm theorizing, or it won't be enough money. So somebody prove that wrong.
So, yeah, I mean, my opinion on is, I don't understand, you know, regardless of how I feel about where the park ended up and all of that, I don't know why we would give somebody a CO when they haven't met the conditions that they said yet.
Well, kind of weighing it up from the council standpoint, the council considered the argument. Part of that argument had to do with employees, and I believe Mr. Cole was involved in some of this, which expanded this concept far beyond what the donors were willing to do. And I think that that was something that we considered as well. The, almost doubled the cost. And some of the council members felt that the applicant was very wealthy, they could throw it in, but we had to look at it from a realistic standpoint. Realistically, if this park, if this playground specifically was in conformance with state standards, we felt that that was appropriate. If at some future date the council wishes to add some, something to it, that's fine. But this is the gift for us, and we were looking at it to the mouth and to the point where we were holding these people hostage. And that's essentially what this is. We're basing this whole thing on one small part of it, which was not clearly defined from the council's viewpoint. The council felt that there was sufficient evidence to show that they would build a park there that would conform to certain state standards, and that's the criteria we used. What is done beyond that would have to be considered by the Recreation Committee, it's not a commission now, and the Recreation Department, and perhaps you would add certain things to it. So that's what we decided as the majority of the council voted to release the applicant from the strict regulations that seem to have been imposed by the planning board. But again, you've already stated it wasn't very specific as to what was going to go into this, and that's where the council stood at this point. So our viewpoint was, give them a certificate of occupancy. I believe a bond is very appropriate, but we'll build it. It has to go through inspection, have inspectors who do this work. I think that would be appropriate, and that was the council's position.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
I guess this is really dumb. If the planning board puts in certain conditions and restrictions, and the applicant can go before Borough Council and have what we put in place right now, what's the purpose?
So you can't, maybe I should talk about procedure to how we would be doing this. So what they're asking this board to do is to release them from this condition or amend this condition so that they can do exactly what Randall just said. The land use law allows you to do that in one of two ways. Number one, you either have another public hearing that's noticed under the normal circumstances, and they come and they present it to you that way, or if it is a situation where it is a, the elimination of something that is not a significant condition. What case law has essentially said is, if it is not a condition that would have changed your vote or your consideration on the initial application, then it's considered to be not a significant condition, and you can address this and vote to amend the condition without public notice in the public hearing. The way that I've dealt with this is we look back to the people that voted on the original application and make that determination based upon what you heard. People that voted on the initial application, Mr. Novato, Warner, Sullivan, Dare, and Cleveland. So those would be the people that we would ask whether or not it would have the removal of this condition or the amendment of this condition, which would essentially be removing the parks commission, parks commission. Because the commission says, subject to the review of the council and the parks commission. Council's already provided their approval, so they have to build it in accordance with what the council said. By amending the condition to remove the approval of the parks commission, essentially it's done and you can move forward. But again, you have to make that determination first, that amending the condition in that fashion and allowing for the bond, which is their other request, would not have changed your initial decision on the overall application. That's enough.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that popped with Jason. Council approved it, though. I cursory looked at it, and there's no site lighting. So it goes back on, I don't know how we're going to do the security lighting. I have some, some concerns, but I was, I had to, I did a cursory review on it, but I found out that, when Tony's tired, that the escrow was negative. So that, I think that needs to be addressed as part of, sure, the planning board, and I grant that amendment.
Hey, there's a word around the shooting.
It's a couple of thousand. When Tony left, there was a couple of projects.
I was correct, that happened in more than one case.
There's like twenty or thirty cases.
And I would, I would entertain that as part of the condition that the escrow be brought up to us.
I'm concerned that we're giving them something, and we're not going to get what we were promised, what we voted on. I kind of remember that they made a big deal, I said, oh, we're going to donate a park. Okay, donate a park, great, beautiful, that sounds great. And then they had to build a five-story building, two of them, behind single-family homes. Yeah, 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 but they're getting a park. Okay, now we're not, we may not be getting a park, we're not really sure, we're not sure what the cost is back and forth, lighting and style. And they showed us on the plans, swings and walkways and wherever else is going on. So we, that's what we think we're voting on, it's a little pocket park, now what?
And would, would you have not voted for that project if that playground wasn't there?
It would be changed, we would get other things back there. We let's make a deal all the time with these people, all kinds of things.
I have a question for Larry.
You know, this, we're going to do that.
Was this something that they volunteered? In other words, this is no good deed, those unpunished type of thing? Did they say, we're going to give it to you, and you say yes? And all of a sudden it morphed into.
I think what happened. I think what happened.
It sticks out in the middle of the neighborhood.
I think what happened was they were asking for a lot of variances, and part of it was, it was a playground that was on the bakery tower site that was not borough-owned, as you guys remember, that got taken down because it was on the same. There was a bunch of questions about that. They said, look, because we're asking for variances, we'll build you a brand-new park. Not with you. You know, that's going to be our give back to you. You guys design and build a park, and I won't pay for it in this market.
It was put into the Redevelopers Agreement at their request that they donate a park.
Yes.
So it's got nothing to do with the planning board or the planning board extracting anything from a developer.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't.
It's in the Redevelopers Agreement, which is a council document.
I was on council in this case, now.
Well, that's right.
So that is why I'm telling you that that is what they gave and said, is that they were putting it in.
It was not part of this deliberation of this board.
I'm not saying it was. Somebody asked, somebody asked the question of how it ended up.
You're right, Jason. So they volunteered.
They, they put it in, yes.
They had certain constraints, by natural constraints, as we all do. They said, this is what will be adequate. That to me would be, I mean, why we're holding up the entire project? Because I think Kara brought up the idea is, this is substantial change in, does this affect the actual project?
Were you going to create one?
No, it doesn't. This was an add-on, this was something that they volunteered. And we said, yes. And then all of a sudden, and as I said, I'm aware of it, there are people in the borough who decided that they had to have something a little bit more.
I heard them know more.
And, you know, so this happens, okay?
I'm well aware, I was involved in the recreation portion of looking at it, and they said, design it, we designed it, and went back and forth a few times. Regardless of, I'm not arguing of that, that's, it is where it is, the council approved it.
And if something has to be done beyond this, not for 2023, but I believe for 2024, we could entertain some.
I don't approve.
Again, they're giving us half the load already. Well, you know, how many times has someone given us a road repayment, but they don't do the curves? Well, it doesn't mean we're going to reject the road repayment because they're not doing the curves. They're giving us a good skeleton. Maybe we need to put some meat on it, or we can, we can argue this thing to the point where it becomes contentious, and then we don't want that to happen.
Right. I think what happened here is, is.
Yeah.
I was talking to Moshe, and he said they budgeted $200,000, $250,000. And then.
The election happened.
The, right. What happened was.
So that's not saying just.
The borough used tile at the YMCA Carroll Page Park on concrete, and there's some stuff thrown out there. And they, the borough wanted tile, and the site line came up, and it came out to be very expensive. It went from $200,000 to $600,000. Okay, so the, I'm just telling you from, I have the emails, I had to go into this stuff recently. So I reviewed it, the Boulder Plan, it had the tile, they came back, I had some, they had keys which aren't ADA compliant, and site lighting, the security, because it has residence there, so you have to have site six, so. But it disappeared because of the cost. So then the applicant went to the council and said, this, everybody knows, you are allowed to use mulch as a playground surface. It's much more cost-effective than the tile, it doesn't matter the pool. So the borough, mine just wants the council in concept to approve the mulch and the layout. So my concern, Jason, I, we're on the same, I think everybody's on the same page here. What I'm just saying is, from my perspective, it has to be, the site lighting has to be reviewed and a policy decision made on that, and ADA has to be realtor accessible. And I, I think the council approved that in concept, being the concept, but the nuts and bolts still have to be reviewed, so I would recommend that we still do the nuts and bolts, should we go there. But I think what Colin is saying is, our hands are so limited because the council approved the mulch and the layout.
I'm not arguing the design of the playground. I argued that before, and I'm done arguing. I'm not trying to argue that. I'm asking why we're, why would we ever really, like, if they're going to build a park? You know, Larry keeps, you know, you keep asking, they're extending it. I have no reason to believe they're not building it. They're going to build it, so why, why would we, like, what do they need a CO for compared to the TCO for right now?
I can actually answer that, you're not going to like it. Can I answer it? Since the project has ostensibly been complete now for two years, right? That's after the rebuild of the building that caught fire and burned down. The TCO does not release them from construction financing, which is essentially available rate finance. And they've been paying that for over two years now, and they want to get released from that so they can get permanent financing. So it's purely financial, and.
How long is it going to take me to build a park? If that's the only thing left there, there's a CO.
If they put a bond up, does it really matter, even though we'll work that out? They're going to put a bond up for the ostensible cost of the park. So if they don't build it, the borough can. Therefore, I believe that they're providing enough security or confidence for this board to say, okay, as long as they put up a bond which is equivalent to whatever the value of this proposed playground will be, why don't we release them from the construction financing, which is high-cost money, and let them get on with their life? They're still on the hook for the playground.
I, I hear what you're saying, and it sounds good on first blush, but Grant just said, well, it won't be in 2023, maybe in 2024. Soon as we start talking about that, that park will never get completed.
Well, I've got.
Because it will all get under money constraints or something.
Larry, we don't want to get into a debate here, but another thing that I should admit, when they go to permanent financing, they will also finance the playground.
I was just going to say, are there other restrictions that we could put on to ensure that this doesn't go out for five, six, seven, eight years?
It won't, yes. They want, they want to run.
From my perspective, no, it would not have changed necessarily my original vote, but it was significant to the surrounding community, and I would like to respect that to make sure that it gets built. So I'm okay releasing it if there's a way of releasing it to ensure that within a certain timeframe, that playground gets built.
On the other hand, Lisa, I think we also have to send a message to the community, and I'm not talking about the Somerville community, but the investor community, that we are reasonable people. I don't know if I would come into this town and offer to do anything other than what we had to do based upon this particular situation. So we don't want to set too much of a precedent. We don't want to be so hard-nosed that investors are not going to invest in Somerville. And I know how people look at, oh, they're developers. So the question is, why don't they go to another town? Because it would be welcome, but why didn't they stop, not come to Somerville? So I really would have to weigh this off one against the other. They've put up a quality project, it works for them, I think it'll work for us, and I see no reason why we can't move on with that and use this as an example, perhaps, of what we really should have approved in its totality and not had to go back to various employees and other volunteer groups that have suddenly money to orders. I mean, $250,000 to $600,000, I heckle a lot more money.
Yeah, but that's also, okay, look, and I'm not going to feed the dead horse, I'm not arguing about this all night or the specifics of it. It's not $600,000, that's the number they decided to give you. I'm designing parks now for other locations in town with that surface. I have numbers. It's not, I mean, I can tell you that it's going to be $10 million, and that.
We need to bring it back here.
I'd like to see the numbers and have the bond cover the full cost of building the playground.
Why not make that as the, not their number, as the condition then?
What's that?
Make that as the condition.
And that's what.
No, I think that assures.
Because that's.
Give them the CO when they find something.
Approving something without seeing it in its entirety. Well, you're saying, put the performance guarantee up, we'll do a site safety review on it, and when the guarantees put up and the escrow's taken care of, that release of the CO because we'll have the bond up.
That's correct.
That's what he.
That I could look at.
All right, so what about something like this? We revamped condition number 13 based on what I'm hearing to say, the design of, design of the park area shall be subject to the review and approval of the Borough Council and shall be constructed by X8. A bond in the amount of 1.5x the. A bond in the amount of 1.5 times the construction cost of the approved design shall be posted and may be utilized by the borough if not built by X date. A CO can be issued upon posting a bond.
What's the date?
That's, yeah.
How long, how long does it take to?
Build a park?
Build the. Two months.
It's really, well, supply chain issues, guys. I mean.
Well, and that's the other thing, I don't want to put something, I don't want to put an unrealistic, in this economy, we have to realize in this economy, I don't want to put an unrealistic, because we're going to be right back here asking. I can barely have to.
Give them 24 months out at the outset.
Yeah, people think mine, guys, the bond costs money, it ties them up. You know, this isn't free money, but they're going to put up this bond and they're going to want to get their money back from it too. I think 24 months would be more than.
And we have an approved design. That's what the council has essentially approved by way of that resolution.
The BOR plans are there, we have the approved design. I'm just concerned some of the site safety issues, which I would like to look at.
And then we put that in the condition.
I'd like to see it a little shorter, I'd suggest seven, one of 24, that's 18 months from now. That should be doable.
Yeah, it's, you have, it takes.
Look, the, the board, the council's approved the equipment and the layout. I just need some guys from the planning board, I can do a review on it, how you want to handle it. This is going to be, in my opinion.
So who knows the way you will.
You cannot have a plan, planning, an urban setting apart with no lighting. I, that's, I'm, I'm suggesting go back to the board for a decision on the lighting when we get to that. I have the BOR plans, this is no lighting.
Well, since it's an escrow account, uh, I would think our client would be otherwise who would take that.
I have, right. But I'm saying that I can recommend standards, but someone has to approve those standards. I don't, I'm saying I don't have the authority to tell them the standards.
Well, we can recommend those standards for approval.
Right, correct. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying I can review, I have the plans, I can review this, knock out a review letter, come back to the planning board, this is going to be about ADA, any icing, and site safety issues. The layout, everything the council's done that for the mulch and the actual equipment, right?
Lighting bothers me because it's a residential neighborhood, you want to make sure there's no ill or whatnot.
Right. But I think you've got to have some lighting in the park.
Yeah, but I agree.
Safety lighting, not, not lighting.
But that's my.
Not lighting it up.
Right.
It's, it's security.
Yeah.
In accordance with the provisions of the code. We're not talking.
Yes, we're talking, but when it comes to lighting, it becomes a borough decision on how you light something.
Does the mulch a good bother?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
It doesn't matter, it's on the bill.
I do have a second question. That site had a fire. They rebuilt it, an entire building.
Yeah.
In how much time from?
A year.
But it's going to take them a year and a half to build a park that's 75 by 150 with mulch. It shouldn't take two years or a year and a half to get that together. If they were serious about it, that damn park would be there already. We're playing games now. But okay, I just, I, I, he can't tell me, you can build a five-story building, rebuild it, and then you can't do a park. Ridiculous.
I understand. The mayor said that 18 months, would you suggest?
It's still too long.
A year then?
I, I, I'm thinking six months. If they're that hell bent about it, if they're serious about it.
It's not going to happen, it's not going to happen right now in this economy.
No, a year then, not a year and a half. I can't see how.
And it's also, doesn't that work?
Okay, so then you give them a year, not a year and a half. A year and a half just drags out. They're making a, that's my big.
Leaving it a year.
Let's assume this year's done because it's, it's waiting.
Of course.
Let's, let's do April 1 of 24.
Yeah.
That's 15 months.
Look at Jesus.
So we're going to have, so Kara, we're going to have a bond posted, a site safety review, the escrow brought up, then we leave the CO. And the bond, the bond is going to be 1.5.
Who's coming up with that number?
They're going to cover the number and I'll circulate.
And we'll have, we'll have somebody look at it and just verify.
Right, I can look at it, but if, if you're, remember what's.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're getting another.
The bond wants to bond in, we'll look at it and the bond's current, we'll do a site safety review.
If it says 200, then we should get this $300,000 off.
Right.
I'm just making sure that that's what we're talking about.
And, and bring the escrow up.
The escrow, which is, uh, so Kara, when you, when you get that all scribbled down, would you go through the list of people who voted affirmatively?
Yes, because what I'd like to do is put the proposal for the, for the amendment to the condition on the table and then, number one, do a vote as to whether or not the amendment to the condition would have changed your initial vote on the application and then do a vote to actually amend the condition.
Okay.
All right, so, so the design of the park area shall be subject to the review and approval of the borough council and shall be constructed by April 1, 2024. A bond in the amount of 1.5 times the construction cost as approved by the board planner of the approved design shall be posted and may be utilized by the borough if not built by April 1, 2024. A CO can be issued upon posting of the bond and payment of all escrow monies in full. And they were talking about a site safety review.
Review of the, I don't want to say past tense, the council's already approved the design. So you don't want to put it in the future, it should sort of, council approved it.
You have to say that the council has approved it.
Right.
And then these are the other, the other issues, these are the other conditions as part of that.
Right.
I don't think I understand.
Okay, read what you said.
I'm sorry.
Start the first part about, start again, read it.
The design of the park area shall be subject to the review and approval of the borough council.
Was subject to the review.
Or was approved.
Council.
But then, remember, this is amended to the condition of the resolution. The fact that that's already taken place just means we can check off that condition.
You don't really even put the borough council.
Well, they had to just do an addendum to the resolution.
That would totally confuse us all.
No, well, if, if it's, if the condition states that shall be subject to the review and approval of the council and that's already happened, it's just a check. Well, we need it because they wanted to be in there, but it's already happened. Just like a lot of these other conditions have already happened.
I'm a hell of a, I'm probably not that one.
So, um, the only thing, and, and, I mean, can we just say that it has to be, um, without seeing the design, it makes it, you know, so there, there was no lighting in the design, no ADA.
I did a cursory review, but the, the account was native so much that I had to request money. I, Colin asked me to do a review for it, but it needs some work in terms of stormwater management, ADA, div gates that you can't work with a wheelchair and ass people.
Right, right.
So we got to take some, in my opinion, you got to take the gates out.
Can you say final approval of, um, safety, site safety issues to be approved by our board planner? Yeah, we could say site safety review.
Yeah.
So the design's already taken part, but then we're separating out the whole site safety.
Right, I'm just knocking a review letter out and give it to the planning board for any review. And if you guys concur with it, you say yes, we concur, or no, that's too rough.
We should retain.
Right.
The jurisdiction to say yes or no.
Right.
And, and not put that burden on my.
Okay. That's why I'm saying that.
I'll do a report. I'll do a simple report on site safety issues and what the council approved and see if the planning board agrees with some of my comments or recommendations. If you don't, or amend it, then go with it.
So the board, so the board shall approve both the bond amount as well as the site safety review.
Yeah.
Correct.
Like, it is compliance.
Yeah, that's the site safety access, public access, not the layout, that's something the council.
Yep.
Okay, so the first vote is whether or not, if this condition were modified to be this way, we wouldn't have voted for it anyway, way back when.
Yeah, would you have voted differently on, on the?
You've only got four people.
Say that one again?
Only four people voting.
Would you have changed, would you have changed your vote if, if this is the condition?
So the people that voted in favor of this that are still here tonight is Novato, Warner, Sullivan, Adair, and Cleveland.
So we're voting on whether or not we would have voted the same way.
Would you have changed your vote?
If this condition was in there.
Correct.
Also, if this, if a new condition was in there, would we have voted?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Novato?
I would not have changed my vote.
All right, now that's it.
And no vote means.
Right, you want to change it.
Right.
Okay, so would you have changed your vote? Your vote was yes.
No.
No. No, we're not going to change my vote. Warner, would you have changed your vote? Your vote was yes. Sullivan, would you?
No.
Okay, Adair?
No.
Cleveland?
No.
Okay. So now, just with those same five people, we're going to vote to amend a resolution entitled Application of Forty Haynes Street Redevelopment LLC, application number 2017-007P in the matter of Forty Haynes Street Redevelopment LLC. That resolution was adopted at a public meeting on April 26, 2017, and we're voting to amend